City of Manistee Planning Commission, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Simanski?
Present.
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Weiner? Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Present.
Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, this time the planning commission could take action to approve the December fifth, two thousand nineteen agenda.
We have a, we have an, we have an amendment.
Sorry, there is an amendment?
So, um, under Roman numeral rule seven, um, it says special use permit site plan size requirements. Um, it should say, um, discussion after the colon. So, five thirty-seven Cypress Street dash special use permit, discussion. And then, under staff reports number, Roman numeral eleven, um, the second bullet point housing discussion directive towards zoning ordinance amendments, um, is recommended to be moved to January when the director, uh, of planning is present and can discuss that after, uh, we have our city DDA meeting, which is coming up. And then, the third bullet point then after scratching the second one out would be, um, citizen planner update for the planning commission and other commissions. Those are the zoning amendments.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah. I was gonna bring that up, yeah.
Alright, um, is there a motion to approve the agenda? With amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion by Shelley, second by Mike, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Approval of minutes, this time the planning commission could take action to approve the November seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
My motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
Oh, I'll second.
Roger, discussion. Um, I did find one thing in the meeting minutes. It's on page one. Approval of minutes from last month, um, a yes vote was, uh, recorded as Simanski and it should be Slawinski?
Okay. He wasn't here for me.
Mike wasn't here.
Cause Mike wasn't here.
Yeah, he was, oh yeah, that's right, good catch.
How did you vote?
How did you get, good going?
Mentally.
Okay, alright.
Telepathic.
Man, you guys are getting high tech.
We are.
Peace, telepathic, huh?
All high tech on this side, Rog.
I guess.
Okay?
Okay.
Um, is there a motion? Oh, we had the motion? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you, public hearings. Uh, we have one public hearing tonight? That is correct?
Oh, we have two.
Two, okay.
Two.
Two, yeah. First is a special use permit pertaining to different uses for the building in a R-two medium density residential district, including retail businesses, convenience store, professional office, professional service establishment. The applicant will have up to fifteen minutes to present with questions afterwards. So, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, I'm Brian Cruz, uh, twelve thirty-six Red Apple Road and two ninety-eighth Street, uh, lifelong resident of Manistee City and the county. I have two requests for the board this evening. First is to approve my special use permit as is. Uh, gone through the costly hurdles that the city put forth, uh, to bring a small business to this location. After the Little Caesar's recently vacated, after ten years their lease was up. I did the site plan as you requested, uh, paid in full by a licensed engineer. And the time-consuming and costly special use application was filed. As you can see, the site plan shows all that the city should have on file. Setbacks, city water, the survey, city sewer, parking, et cetera. During the past ten years, while occupied by Little Caesar's, there were many cosmetic improvements, new windows, roof, electrical service, exterior painting and brick and tuck, brick tuck and pointing. Prior to this building, as some may know, there was another building there that my grandpa owned, it was IGA. At that time, he tore it down sixty-eight years ago or so, and he built this new building that's in question right here because US thirty-one was being put through. And to accommodate US thirty-one, the highway, which is Cypress Street. The entrances and curbing was put in by Department of Transportation, DOT, to their standards. Similar to A and W, which on corner of, uh, what, third and, uh,
Highway.
The highway, they have a curbing of about twenty-eight feet to their entrance. The Shell has maximum twelve feet curbing to their entrance. Where five thirty-seven Cypress has thirty feet of curbing to their entrance off of that key street. In regards to traffic, I've lived seven houses away from this location for forty-nine years. The local traffic in this area has decreased considerably. Saint Joe Church, where I belong to, lifelong par- parishioner, used to have thirteen masses, they're down to five a week. Less traffic there. Garden Angels is now closed. Even with Saint Joe going to Divine Mercy, moving in Garden Angels and Saint Mary's, there's a lack of attendance. Lot less traffic. The high school is no longer a high school, it's half a building and half a, whatever else you wanna call it, uh, middle school. Deteriorating bu- building up there, less traffic there. Next door was a full-service gas station, Rotz's seventy-six station, full-service, gas, automotive work. That's no longer there, now it's Donnie Nymick Sporting Goods, which has been pretty slow. Hibbs' Chiropractor, right down the street, used to be the Jehovah Witness Church. Far busier in line of traffic compared to three, four, or five patients a day. And two doors away, Good Shepherd Church, uh, decreasing parishioner list, where I was approached less than a week ago, asked if I was interested in their parking lot, which was for their overflow, which has never been used. They request, they asked if I'd be interested in taking it off their hands. That's the one right next door.
The one to the?
To the south.
South, corner of Sixth and the Highway.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Twice we've been, it just was just a matter of a week ago I was contacted again.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, uh, business prospects. In the last four or five months, we've had approximately eight businesses showing interest in that location. A home building company, two flower shops, a glass place, a pizza place, a tobacco store, and the local realtor, Co-All Bankers contacted us with two more potential businesses interested. Uh, we have lost a couple already due to the time and cost in getting these permits. They fled the scenes already, so. That was my first request, second request, being that the zoning board or the planning commission is, uh, amending zoning ordinances, I'd like the ordinance for the R-two medium density commercial buildings on truly a key street segment, US thirty-one. Which is a truck route and a business route, far more than any other street in this city. That zoning ordinance be amended to remove the need for a special use permit. Thank you.
You?
Thank you. So, what's the problem that you're having?
Problem with what?
With this, what do you want?
I want to be able to open a store, I can't do anything till I get a permit for now. And knowing that I never needed a permit for sixty-eight years until the new ordinance went into place after the fact, where that's another thing, grandfathering should be, phrase should be brought back into the vocabulary of the city. It's using all contracts, uh, MOUs, uh, leases, everything, grandfathering is listed.
So now you wanna put a business in there that had businesses for the last sixty years?
Correct, yeah.
And the city is saying you can't do it?
Well, I'm here tonight trying to get a approval. Was here last month.
Did you, I know that, but did you get approval for the other businesses?
Didn't need it.
Didn't need it?
No, new ordinance is put in effect sometime, they say nobody remembers, cause they're all new, you know, it's like, I lost my homework, you know?
Yeah.
Nobody knows about it, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My union, I mean, I've been there forty years, member of US Merchant Marine, we got, uh, records going back a hundred and fifty years, you know, I imagine there's records here when this was put into place and when it,
Yeah.
That's why grandfathering should be like the parking, it should be grandfathered in.
Yeah, there are sections or pieces where it, where it does come to use, but, uh, I understand.
New construction, I understand.
Yeah.
New construction, do what you want. But these buildings, you can look at the building, there's no room for up, away, down, out. It's there, it is what it is.
Yeah, right, right.
Same thing with the majority of businesses in Manistee.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
So, I'm all looking for is this, I mean, I, there's nine businesses in that R-two medium density stretch that are gonna come up to the problem I'm gonna have sooner or later if they sell or someone moves out, where they're gonna need a special use permit. Why, it's been a business for years, they've been businesses for years. Why would they need this all of a sudden, cause someone decide to amend an ordinance, well amend it back or change it again? For those buildings in place.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, staff recommendations?
Yeah. So, um, as mentioned in the presentation, parking, um, has, there's a potential, I just have a question if you'd be interested in that parking lot, um, to maybe offset some of the parking issues that the site faces for different uses?
Church already been far in the interest.
Okay, um, so that being said, um, some of our recommendations, um, that go over, um, the parcel have to do with parking, so, um, if there was a different parking situation, um, the planning department would have a different, uh, stance towards, um, some of the different issues presented with this site. Um, as showcased in the images in front of us, um, the parcel line goes along the, um, eastern side of the parcel, along the wall up into the sidewalk corner and over, um, that being said, um, the parcel has, um, uh, six current parking spots. Um, the ordinance, um, which is what we go by, um, currently for different uses, of course, um, goes over, um, the different uses proposed for it to have a certain ratio of square footage of the building to, um, the amount of space is desired. Um, so what is being, um, asked for, uh, with this special use permit is around four or so different uses, um, that would go for each of the different lesses in the future, I'm sure, so. The different uses include the professional service establishment, the office space, and the retail business, to name three. Um, the retail business space, as the ordinance lays out, um, showcased on the screen here, I can flip it, um, goes over four hundred fifty square feet, um, hold on. Um, so it goes over a table here showcased in section five fourteen, the parking, bike parking and sidewalks. Uh, the use table showcased on the bottom of the page, uh, showcases the use on the left and the number of parking spaces per unit of measure on the right. Um, it's a ratio of the square footage of the building to the amount of square footage, uh, square feet required for the different use. Um, for example, retail establishment would be four hundred fifty square feet of floor area, uh, which would be divided by four thousand, or four thousand divided by four fifty, which would equate to around nine spaces. Um, so currently there are six spaces, and these are just comments, there's no recommendations, this, this, this parcel has six spaces on it. Um, so this use would need nine spaces, if we were to look at the office space and things, um, two hundred fifty, uh, square feet, four thousand divided by two fifty is just under double of nine, so around, you know, seventeen or eighteen spaces. Um, that being said, to allow the different uses for this though, they once were surely, uh, we understand that and we respect that and things though, the current ordinance states that these is the ratio, so, to have a professional office space or other types of office spaces, um, there would need to be seventeen spaces on the parcel or a way for, um, there to be overflow parking or off-street parking, so. That being said, um, the different, uh, image in front of us now showcases the potential to get to, um, a feasible amount of spaces for the area. Um, what we have come up with in front of you is a, a potential to get eight spaces near or, uh, adjoining the parcel. Um, the orange spaces on the left of this image are off the parcel and owned by the city, so, um, that is a question of who would maintain that, who would paint that, who would continue to plow the snow, take care of the leaves, how would that be marked and things like that? Um, the northern part of the parcel, or I guess, mm, the western, right, yup, the western part of the parcel has, um, not much, um, opportunity for a space because of the twenty-five foot necessary for the clear vision zone. Um, so that being said, that space was eventually eliminated though, um, if there was parking to the,
Be the south?
To the south of the, of the building, um, touching the parcel line, that would be something to consider. The planning commission does, as we know, have the ability to, um, not as wave requirements and make them more of a, um, opportunity for certain cases. This parcel is basically at the extent of what it can be for parking, uh, in our opinion, on the actual parcel, so. Without knowing about the opportunity for the overflow parking, this was our solution to come up with eight spaces, though still one less than what would be required for the retail business, let alone the office space. So, that being said, if there was, if there's an interest and a sincere desire to maximize that parking space, then this would be a different type of hearing, I guess, a different type of recommendation, so.
A question? It's showing on the, um, SUP application that the land area is forty-four hundred square feet, and yet we're talking about only four hundred and fifty feet of retail?
No, that's for every four hundred and fifty feet of retail.
Oh, every?
Yup.
Okay, and so, when Little Caesar's was in there, didn't they only have half of that building?
They leased the whole building.
Oh, they did? And is that your intention now, to lease it to one person, the whole thing?
My intention was to split it in half, so Caesar's did put a wall in there eventually.
Yeah.
Mr. Cruz, could you come up to the podium, please?
They did put a wall in there eventually and shrunk it up to half, they split it right down the middle. So, my intent, and they put all separate, uh, electrical supply into one side for their ovens and everything, so my intent is to split it in half with utilities and use it as two locations, two, uh, and again,
Well, I was just gonna say, if in fact that would be used then as two locations, um, based on the square footage we're talking about, you kinda need that extra parking, don't you?
There's another, what, ordinance was put in effect August of nineteen. It should be grandfathered. I mean, you write the ordinance after the fact to a building that's been there for all these years, with no room for growth, the ordinance is no good for that purpose. It's fine if you have Myers parking lot, you can do that. But to a building and existent, which many buildings in Manistee are like this, to write a ordinance after the fact shouldn't pertain to this or a similar type situation.
Well, this is where you're saying it should be grandfathered in?
Correct.
Yup. If it's in your,
I have no control over opening this, expanding it, I have option maybe of getting that parking lot, but that's a after-the-fact possibility.
Gee, it wasn't that long ago you knew they came and wanted to buy that, the church, now they wanna sell it, eh?
Wanna sell it. They approached me a week ago Saturday. And then about a month ago, cause they thought they'd have a parishioner, you know, a big bunch of people coming, they're losing, they're losing people also.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so my question, if you'll excuse me, gets back to, has that building ever supported two separate businesses?
No.
I know you're on, okay. My question then is, if it is your intention to rent, the, the, to rent it as two separate, um, leases, bussers, you're, I'm guessing you're gonna require additional parking, so,
Don't know.
Come an issue.
Well,
To be addressed here and not just assume that there's gonna be enough parking.
Well, it was a grocery store for years.
Yeah.
The whole building.
But a lot of people walked to the grocery store when it was neighborhood grocery stores.
It was a pizza place for ten years.
And a lot of people walked to that.
No, they didn't.
You understand what you're saying, which I do.
I see, I can walk to everything.
Yeah, but if you have two businesses and you have seven parking spaces for one, you should have seven parking spaces for the others, shouldn't you?
Or at least add.
It's a professional office building, you got two workers, so you have two spots, or you might have one, cause the other ones might walk to work.
Yeah.
Maybe they all might walk to work.
Yeah, but all the patients won't walk to work.
But if it's an office building, they won't have patients, I'm saying if it's a professional, take, you know, a cler- cler- you know, a
Yeah.
Clerical person or something for office.
Well, that's true now, right?
So then what am I gonna do, take those six spots away and then I got them for someone else?
I'm just trying to,
I, I know what you're trying on.
Because we'd like you to be able to lease a building, whether it's to one business or two businesses, and trying to come up with what's needed and what can be done to accommodate.
Well, it was a rent-to-own, they didn't walk there, cause they had to get the material out.
Right.
Right.
It was, uh, it was, uh, two, uh, three grocery stores, maybe they all walked. Uh, it was Little Caesar's, uh, it was nine different businesses and I can't, you know,
Little Red Shoe House was in there?
Little Red Shoe House, yeah, they walked for their new shoes.
Yeah.
Got their new shoes on, they took.
I think there was an eye doctor in there too.
Eye doctor, two eye doctors.
Two eye places.
Yup.
Right, and that was the full building, and, uh, there was plenty enough, uh,
Shoe house too, yeah.
Little Red Shoe House.
Little Red Shoe House is in there, yeah.
So, I'm just saying, over the years, it's been, whether it's one or two, it's been sufficient.
It's always been a commercial business of some type.
Always been, oh yeah. Cause you had Rotz's gas station right next door, that was far busier in and out. There had to be parking for them cars, cause he did automotive work.
Yeah, yeah.
On the other corner, that was, uh, Revolts lived there, that was a home, then
Yeah.
Forinson and Zajek bought it, and there was a duplex, uh, you know, to rent, where the parking lot is now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, as far as parking,
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah, what parking lot was, that building was a mess.
And then another question, which was brought up by Kyle, about these two parking spots on the street, which has been used forever, what have they been done in the past?
They don't have, uh, I, I don't think they have lines currently, is that right?
No.
Right, so.
But people have parked there, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, they've been, yeah, forever, but I mean, has the plow, plowed that to clear it, or is the business keep that clear?
The business does, cause Little Caesar's was gonna put their drive-through in there. Until they found a bank being, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Where he can lease the second part of his business out, there's not enough parking there either.
No.
Yeah.
They got less parking spots than that.
Yeah.
And they got a separate building that's up for lease. The Little Caesar's currently.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they're zoned differently.
Well, see, there you go again, that's why we gotta get rid of the special use permit and zone this commercial properties only on a truly, uh, US thirty-one key segment changed.
I believe the zoning ordinance was changed two years ago, where if a business was out for more than a year, then there was no, it wasn't, was not grandfathered in. I, I don't remember. Rog, you, you were on it.
Me, I don't.
Rog, you were on it, you were on the commission.
Yeah, no, I don't recall it, I'm sure there was a good reason we did what we did.
With Denise, yeah.
And I'm sure we probably screwed up, obviously, at the time. But, uh, see, we, it's hard to pick and choose, everything was going strong in your particular business. Have never thought of, you know, I mean, if, we never considered it, cause it never came or we never had a d- problem.
Yes.
My, my suggestion is that we treat this as a unique issue. Uh, they, they've already basically complied with everything that the city has asked for as far as paying for the special use, getting the, the site assessment. So, my suggestion is, because it is a unique anomaly to, um, our city, basically here is an, an established business that has been, uh, in and around it, all of us know all those different businesses that have been there before. And we recognize the fact that we, we've never had any issues with that property, uh, from a city standpoint. That we just go ahead and accept this as a special use permit, uh, understanding that it doesn't meet all the requirements that we would meet for a, a new business, but again, it's the same thing on River Street. You're not gonna change that building on River Street, you change how you address it, because you can't, there's nothing you can do with the property as is.
Because you look at the buildings on River Street, ninety percent of them are encroaching on each other's property. A lot of them have common wall construction.
Yeah.
There's one wall between the two buildings.
Yeah.
So, I, I think it, it, it's, it would not be outside of our purview to be able to grant the special use, even though it doesn't meet all of what we'd expect for.
Right, right, okay, um.
Well, just to add to that, Mike, then, the only thing we're lacking here is one parking space, correct?
For a specific u-
For a specific use.
It's actually, it's three spaces on the parcel, I mean, like, it, what it comes down to, but, yeah, you're lacking adequate parking for a specific use in retail.
But there is parking down on Sixth Street.
There is, and you've got parking down for that matter, if it becomes that popular, they got the church, which is,
Right.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they could use the church, but they're not gonna say nothing, I mean.
They do now, Little Caesar's, all their employees parked in there.
Yeah, that's right.
Another thing, another thing I see coming up possibly, or we're doing on this,
Yeah, well, I don't see that.
Big shop next door, or this morning good store, somewhere down the line, something's gonna come up on that, with that being a retail business, how do we wanna treat that too? It might not be a bad idea to plan ahead on that.
And, and again, and have some kind of, you know, um, if, if we have not created a grandfather clause, have, have a grandfather, uh,
ability written into our ordinance that can be worked basically on a case-by-case basis with the planning board.
Well, that's something that we can tackle in the new year.
Yeah, we got nothing else to do.
Yeah, we're not gonna be busy, so. I mean, if, if we feel strongly, if everybody feels strongly on that?
Sure, I, I mean, I, I personally agree with Mike, I, I mean, the man does have a point, yeah. Yeah, if we don't do it, I mean, he can't open a business, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think we gotta look through all those parcels also in that area that already have established businesses or had established businesses there that could still reopen a business.
Right.
We need to keep those in mind down there too.
Well, that's sort of like Mike said, that grandfather, somebody.
Cause they, cause they, We, yeah, I mean, did we, did we kinda drop the ball? You know, it's,
Yup.
Not saying yes, but, you know, it looked like it, so.
And, and I can see that as things change with, is, it's gonna be harder and harder for residents to sell their properties on US thirty-one. I mean, be honest, you know, it's, it's a busy, it's the busiest street in town, but you wanna buy that and have your family home there?
Yeah.
So, as those homes come for sale, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna be ending up having similar issues where people are going to, you know, be looking at the potential for a, uh, commercial.
Or re- or rental.
Or rental.
If I might ask too, then with this approval, we all feel the same, we have no con- or condition or power over what type of a business, suppose it, right?
Yeah, we do, to,
I mean, to a certain extent we do, but,
Yeah, yeah.
Like he was talking convenience store, the application convenience.
Convenience store, uh, professional offices, um, yeah.
If he's got a list of them, it could,
Fits within the pl- those, the planning.
Yeah.
The master plan, so.
Right, right, okay, alright.
Zoning.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll go along with that, Mike.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, with this,
Close the public hearing?
Right. We have to have public comment?
Public comment.
So, if there is anyone in the audience that'd like to speak up, please approach your podium, name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Yeah.
No one? Okay. We'll close this public hearing. And the second public hearing, Bob, you will run.
Okay.
Be so kind?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I go ahead, my minutes, but we forgot the wrong.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Um, the decision for five thirty-seven will happen later in the meeting.
Okay, so we got the public hearing for two sixty-six, two seventy, Third Street, zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, this is for pertaining to an assembly facility. The application team will have fifteen minutes prevent, present with their questions after. Say your name and address, and go ahead, Mike.
I'm Mike Kamalowski, address thirty-nine zero-three Lake Shore Drive, and a native of Manistee. This project is about bringing boat building back to Manistee, utilizing a facility that I own on Third Street.
Um, this project is about bringing boat building back to Manistee, utilizing a facility that I own on Third Street. And as we go through the slides, do I advance them, or do you want me to advance them?
Yep, the bottom, the bottom pointer, yeah.
Okay.
They're over, and the red.
First of all, uh, the, the management team is here with me today, so I wanna introduce everyone to them, and what we have is Jim Robertson. He's from Lansing, moving up to Manistee, Andy Lindstrom from Nashville, Tennessee, and Michelle Berry from, uh, Boynton City. Dasky area. They came down to, to, uh, support us in this, in this, uh, program as well. So what, eh, what is this server boat company all about? Real quickly, it's about, it's a startup boat builder led by a small management team in the marine industry with over a hundred and sixty-five years of experience, so we all have been in it for a long time. And why Manistee? Because it has a deep history of boat building, with Century Boat being here almost sixty years. There's, there's still a tie to the, the boat building in, in this, within this community. Uh, the brand is about made in Michigan, so we're not only supporting Manistee, but we're supporting Michigan suppliers as well. And most importantly, we, eh, our first selection of any support businesses is gonna be the Manistee area. If we can't find anyone within the Manistee area, we either help start it, or we branch out into, within Michigan. And the only time we rule, we will move out of Michigan for any type of support is because we can't find it within Michigan. So what is the brand all about? It is, it's a, a new brand that is, um, creating a whole, whole new niche in the marketplace. It's our images of the first model that'll be produced. The boats that'll be produced here are of, um, pretty, very high quality, so they are, um, they're, it's, it's not a high-volume brand, but it's a high-quality wa- demand, brand that will be sought after within the industry. So, first few images of the brand we're gonna be, um, kicking off, kicking it off with. If, this is a pic, a view of the site plan. So a corner seven and Third Street, you can see the existing building, you can make it out. Uh, in the back, there's two parcels on here, an office onto an existing warehouse, and then a, another existing office. And then all the supporting property around it, in addition to the parking spaces that are outlined here. There's actually a drive-in parking space that curve around and go to the, to the west end of the building as well. Within the facility, this is, this facility will, will be used in the maximum capacity. We feel within this facility will be six pro- six boats being built. Not up to say time, but it'll, it'll house up to six. And that number will grow up to six only as time goes on, and I'll show you here in a minute. So as volume increases, the need for more bo- more boats in process will increase. But we will cap it at six, because we don't wanna, we don't want to be crippling ourselves with, with space. And we wanna have room to actually be assembling these, these boats as they come in. Um, when we get to the six, six, um, six units, that's actually what we produce, and we'll be turning one boat a day through, through the facility. If one will come in and wanna go out, the rest, the other five will be working process. So that's the only reason we would get to that. Initially, for the first couple of years, you may see two to three at all times in there with one turning per week, and then accelerating from that point on. As far as the production plan goes, so there's plenty of room in there to do what we're gonna be doing and to move this product through. The three-year production plan, the first year, fifty units, fifty units equates to about one a week. Um, the fiberglass components are being shipped in from our fi- fiberglass facility, all that molding is being done outside. So we don't have to deal with the chemicals and emissions and everything that you would normally need. All that product will come in, fifty again, fifty a year, which is one a week, which would be two to three in the pri- in the building all the time. Year two, the, the volume will start increasing, you'll start seeing more product within the building, climbing upwards closer to four and five. Year three, once we start approaching the two hundred a year, which is, um, pretty close to one per day, that's when the facility will max, will cap, will cap out at the six units in and at a time. Um, and that is, that is our trigger, uh, even prior to that, that we need to now exercise an option on a, a bigger facility to increa- to utilize our, our increase in demand. So we're using this as a stepping stone to get to the volumes, and then, once we get to the volumes, we'll have to go, be there, build or buy a facility. Um, and we're already in those talks determining where's that, where will that be, and will be something we build or existing, because now, from that point, the volume increases. The facility will continue to be used, could be used for warehousing of materials. Um, it could be used for, oh, I would say an upholstery shop that supports the manufacturing process. But the important thing is, once we move to another bigger facility, it will still be in Manistee. It's not gonna be moved outside, it'll be, it'll retain here. So, what will that mean as far as people? So initially, the first, you can see the years labeled here, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. We've, we've got direct labor, which is our employees directly, that will be reporting to that, um, two seventy-third site. Don't it mean they'll all be working there, because some will be based at remote locations? For instance, Andy will be in, in Nashville, Tennessee, but he travels the, the country, so it's not, there's no need for him to be there, but he is a direct employee of the company. Um, indirect, our, our other companies, we, that will be supporting us, such as Portage Wire, Dr. Shrink, um, could be Manistee Welder, Welding Shop in Town, that they will have to bring in additional employees to meet the demand that we require. And they're already up for it, so we've already engaged with those companies. So this is what the, the labor plan looks like. So three, four years out, now it's starting to increase substantially, and that's the reason we need, we'll need a bigger facility to house, to, to handle the production and house the, the workforce. And that is it. So, we're looking for, um, an amendment to that facility for this use. And, um, um, I know we talked last about noise. We talked about, you know, how many, how many employees we work in there, I answered the employee question. As far as noise, if anyone was gonna ask it, noise is, is minimal to none. And, uh, you know, I stood outside with one of the neighbors last week, and she asked about noise. I said, listen to more and salt in the trains, it'll be, you, you won't even hear anything going on in our building. Um, plus, I was running, we were running some machinery inside the building, um, recently, walked outside, ten feet away from the building, you don't hear anything. And machines are, are not even gonna be operated very, very much. The other thing is, can, due to the fact of what we're building, nothing is kept outside. So, a couple people parking their cars, we park them in the parking lot, but there will not be materials outside. And we can't, we're not gonna store any boats or any, any parts outside, because there's no need for it.
And didn't we get into hours?
Hours, we talked about hours, I said arrange from seven to six. Um, I know it's a longer range, but it's gonna be a normal working hours. It, it most likely would be from eight to five, but office people make them in at six o'clock, or seven o'clock, and open up the office and get things rolling. Um, but it'll be normal working hours.
And then exterior lighting?
It's got exterior lighting on it, correct, right now?
It does.
Mm-hmm, it's got three exterior LED lights, there's a big halogen post light. Um, that we don't turn on right now, but that actually lights up a pretty good sized perimeter. And there's security in the building.
So you're saying, oh, we're gonna see that there's parking, is the cars and employees, and maybe a boat trailer waiting to load a boat on, and maybe about it?
That's about it.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's deliveries, you have UPS delivering occasionally, and there may be truck freight on a very rare occasion, which will be bringing, like, engines, we'll need engines, and those engines come in maybe once a week. And be unloaded and put in the building, couldn't even be less than that, like.
Just curious, what was the, the facility before, when it was, what first built?
I bought it twenty years ago, and it was actually, um, it was, it was not in, it was, uh, close to being condemned, it was not a functional building.
No.
It was.
No, it was in rough shape.
It was a real rough shape, it was clinging roofing and siding at one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and.
Didn't you try to build boats in there or something?
So, so when I bought, when I bought it, it had to be totally renovated, because the roof had to be stripped off of it.
Right.
We found out the structure's completely made out of two-by-six oak and maple. So the whole, the, the core of it is an incredibly solid building. So put a new roof on, added an office on, took the, the loading shed, which is nothing more than a pond for kids to swim in, which we ripped all that out, and, and then finished, cleaned up the building, just put a brand-new roof on it this summer. And then we're gonna be finishing the exterior facade and planting strawberry and making it look, look good.
Yeah.
Um, but pro- so then I, I leased, I bought a company back, when, well, the reason I bought the building is I needed how is A and A Marine Manufacturing, which is a small, light manufacturing and a distribution of marine parts, which my brother owns today. Um, manufacturer, or he, he operated out there for almost eighteen years. And then the, then, one section of that shop was a boat restoration, um, company, that restored boats.
Yeah, I remember seeing stuff down there.
Right, right.
There was more stuff outside then than there will be with us, because they just didn't have the room to store stuff, and they didn't need it inside if they weren't working on it.
So the building that was the bookstore, you're using that for something too there?
That will be just, it'll be an office.
Now, you, you speak pretty optimistic, what, what, this thoroughboat, thoroughbred boat company? What, what makes you feel that way?
I've been.
Is this a, a, on a, what, on a bottom-line price-type boat, or is it a high-priced boat, or is it medium, or?
It's a high-priced boat. So, the one we're coming out with, uh, that you saw a picture of is gonna retail for about ninety thousand dollars. Which in today's world, and, and I'll back up that, that, and goes to the, what you first asked the question. Why am I and others missed about it? I've been in the industry for forty-three years.
Right.
Andy's been in it for thirty-six some odd years, Michelle's been in it for as long. So we're very connected and understand the industry at a very high level, and, and we, we, we follow trends, and we follow brands, and we know what's going on in the industry, but we see a, a, a segment of product that disappeared from the industry and doesn't exist today.
Okay.
And, so we're confident in knowing that, that this product, we're gonna bring back the niche. Keeping it at a low volume will keep the, keep the demand out there. We're not gonna be a high-volume producer, where you're sitting there now trying to figure out who you're selling to. So we keep the, the, the demand down, it keeps the, I mean, keep the production down, it keeps the demand up.
Yeah, yeah.
And the price points, we, we've studied that forever, and we wanna, our sweet spot is ninety thousand. With some options, it could be approaching a hundred thousand dollars, but in, for most people, that's not inexpensive boat.
Right, 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 for a boater.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember when, I remember when Century moved down south, it brought a lot of pe- a lot of anger from people that the boat was leaving.
Yeah, 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 well, I just, it, it looks just, yeah, like an old century, I mean, yeah.
There's intention to, to, and the name Thoroughbred is what Century was considered.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. Now, they're completely undone, eh, Century?
Nope. No, they moved to Panama City, Florida, that's when I left the company and had, and moved out of town, um, for a period of time.
Yeah.
Century was in, cha- it changed hands five times since.
Oh.
Um, and as it changed hands, it changed brand, and its brand identity, and now it's a sufficient boat company built in southern Florida. It was owned by Olin Mills Corporation, it was owned by, um, uh, Glastre Corporation, it was owned by Yamaha Motors. Um, and then several other parties, and, so the name is still is there, but the brand is kinda tarnished.
Yeah.
You know, it's not what it used to be.
No, no, not at all.
Yeah, this.
Alright, thank you.
This picture even looks like one of the old Centuries.
It is.
It does.
Yeah.
The old wood Centuries.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, we have all the, when I bought A and A Marine, which belonged to Conrad Adamski.
Yeah.
All, all the history files from Century were, were left behind, the pre- that owner that took it over at the time, could care less about any of it, he retained all of it. So we still have all those files and records.
Man.
My brother has them since when I sold him the company, but we still have access to that for any type of reference or guidance.
That's like the old-time recipes you got there, then.
Yeah.
And some of the old people that used to work on those boats are still around too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
There's still people to draw from.
Not the fiberglass, but the, uh, the other guys. Yeah, go ahead. I'm good, thank you, uh, Bob, uh.
Uh.
Public comment first?
Uh, of course.
Steph, yeah.
Let me pull it up. Um, just wanna be clear that this is, um, for a zoning ordinance amendment, this is not a special use permit, um, currently. Um, after this process of, uh, potential recommendation from the planning commission, it would then go to city council for, um, the readings that are required, and then the final vote to actually amend the ordinance to allow this. Um, what you see on the screen in front of you is, um, the draft ordinance language to amend the part of an ordinance entitled Manistee City zoning ordinance. Um, and the following is what would be amended. Section one goes over the different articles in the ordinance that would hence be, um, amended to allow this, uh, special use. Amend article three, the table of land uses, table three dash two, uses permitted by right, and special land use permit table to change the R two medium-density residential use table under assembly operation to special land use SLU with an asterix. And include in the annotation section, uh, at the bot- at the end of the document. So what you see on the use table in front of you in the red box, which is currently empty, would essentially, if recommended by planning commission and approved by city council, would say SLU, uh, asterix to, um, essentially showcase what would be allowed in that, uh, specific area. Article nine would be amended to, um, the R two medium-density residential special uses in the requires key street frontage table, um, to add the special use, uh, assembly operation, uh, with an asterix. Uh, under the, the district regulations, uh, uses in the key street frontage, it would then say, um, an annotation below, um, location of this use on a key street frontage would be letter H in section five thirty-two of the City of Manistee ordinance. Um, this section goes over, um, A through maybe K or L or something that, um, outlines the specific segments of the key street. So what's being applied for is showcased on the document cam, uh, in front of you now. Um, the posted note with the little bracket showcases the specific part of the key street segment that's being, um, applied to be amended, and, um, just that section.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
So we're all clear on that. Um, further, the amendments would include, um, section two to have the effective publication of this to be ten days after enactment, and, um, seven days after the publication. Um, different copies would be available through the city clerk and the newspapers circulated, uh, and such. So, um, whenever that, if possible, or feasible date in twenty twenty, would then be, um, ordained by the city clerk with different, um, specificities added to the highlighted areas.
Uh-huh.
So that's the, uh, current status of the draft ordinance language, um, to effectively have city, uh, council look at and then make their, um, recommendations, so. Um, right now, uh, that's all we have regarding the zoning ordinance amendment request, um, from the staff.
Any questions of staff?
Um.
That's all we got.
No, I, you know, I don't know, not so much a question, is that, you know, I really appreciate the fact that, uh, out of all the places you could have picked, you, uh, you did decide to pick your hometown in Manistee, and especially down in Maxwelltown. Uh, you know, again, I, uh, encouraged with, uh, with people like yourself that are willing to invest in that part of our community, so.
Well, thank you.
What's wrong with Maxwelltown?
No.
No, I'm.
What do you mean that part of our?
Not even Maxwelltown, that.
Aw, brother. Marco, tell them, you're that, you come from Maxwelltown?
I'm not from Maxwell.
Yeah, that's not Maxwelltown.
That's not Maxwell.
No, not where you are now.
That's the old business route of thirty-one anyway, through there. Old Business Thirty-One through there.
Well, and, and boat manufacturing, it's, it's not the most desirable area in northern Michigan for boat manufacturing. As you can see, most of the, most boats manufacturers have moved out of the state.
Yeah.
They moved to southern climates, or they moved to more centralized locations. Um, in Indiana is a real popular spot because of all the suppliers. And, um, and there's a, there's a core base of employees. Um, you know, we were asked early on years ago, why would you bring it here? Because there's not an employee base to support it. And that wasn't our concern, we'll bu- we'll build the employee base, we'll figure that out.
Does Cadillac still have Four Winds?
Yes, and five, four of the brands are being built on that facility.
Really?
Yeah, they have Glaston, Wellcraft, Scarab, Four Winds.
Yeah.
Four brands.
I, I remember you watching the boats used to test on the lake.
What's that?
They used to test the boats on Manistee Lake all the time.
Yeah, I know, I used to work at Hardee's, I used to watch them out the window, so you've got eight people, and you got five of them supposedly here?
Yes.
That don't leave much for the rest of them. Were either three home or shoveling?
Alright, go ahead. I'm good, boss, go ahead.
Anything else? Okay, public comments. Anyone? Okay, closing the public hearing and moving on to the next part of the, back to Mark.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see, new business, five thirty-seven Cypress Street, special use.
I'd like to read the corris- I'd like to read the correspondence that, uh, has been received, uh, on the parcel.
Public comment, did you, or did we ask that?
We did.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so, uh, what will follow now is the correspondence for five thirty-seven Cypress Street regarding the special use permit, um, for different uses. There's four different pieces I'd like to read now. Uh, to whom it may concern, my name is Jessica Stallings, my husband Patrick and I have lived in Manistee for nearly seventeen years. We have welcomed four beautiful children. Over the years, we've witnessed several dozen businesses come and go. We live at three two four Sixth Street, just a block from the building. Up for discussion, and we would love to see a business welcomed into the said building. Bringing a new business in this area would be really beneficial because it would not only offer jobs, but it would pique interest and draw some wanted attention to the area as well, which could, in turn, also benefit some of the other local businesses. We would much rather see a business thrive in our town than watch a building sit empty. Kindness regards, signed Jessica Stallings, three twenty-four Sixth Street, Manistee. Alright, so, to whom it may concern, my name is John Tuca. I reside at two eighty-two Sixth, and it has been brought, brought to my attention of some possible interest in bringing a business to five thirty-seven Cypress recently, Little Caesar's Pizza. I personally welcome the idea, new business shows positive growth in a community. Too often, too often, buildings are vacated only to become eyesores in the community, which we really don't need. Respectfully signed, John Tuca, November twenty-fourth. Dated eleven twenty nineteen, uh, City of Manistee Council slash Board. To whom this may concern, in regards to many vacant buildings around Manistee and quote, the old Little Caesar's Building located at five thirty-seven Cypress Street, US thirty-one. With many owner, with many owners' desire to bring in new business, it's concerning to me as a business owner and resident of Manistee why the city continues to make it so hard for potential new business to occupy an existing vacant building. I understand there are certain policies, but I would think the city would work with and help owners of these vacant commercial buildings bring in business and have an opportunity to offer more for the City of Manistee. As an owner of Stu's Pub in Maxxwell Town, I would love to see more business opportunities around the neighborhood, and we welcome a new business at five thirty-seven Cypress Street. The more we have to offer, the better chance we keep the business in Manistee and not out of town. Signed, John Coopshaw.
Jason.
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 Oh, Jason, excuse me.
Nate Coopshaw.
Uh, the last piece of correspondence regarding five thirty-seven Cypress, uh, reads. Suzanne Lauffler, five thirty-five Cypress Street, Manistee, phone number, date twelve oh one nineteen. To whom it may concern, I own the property next to five thirty-seven Cypress Street in Manistee, the building is currently vacant. Manistee is a community that needs to thrive and provide opportunities for future generations. I'm aware that there are currently several prospects looking to relocate to that location. I can say with certainty that I have no problem with any business locate, looking to relocate there. I hope that Manistee would also welcome any business looking to bring job opportunities to the community. Thank you for your time, signed sincerely Suzanne Lauffler. That's all the correspondence for, uh, five thirty-seven, uh, Cypress Street.
Okay.
Alright.
Um, so now the discussion on the planning commission would be the decision, um, for this said parcel for, uh, special use permit as, um, applied for regarding the four different uses. And we can go over those again, um, so we're all clear when things are being discussed. The different uses, um, on the application include, uh, as shown on your screen, retail business, convenience store, professional office, professional service establishment. Um, those four different proposed land uses have different, uh, needs and necessities as outlined in the Manistee City zoning ordinance. Um, so, to have all these different businesses, um, there are different regulations for each of them. So, it's on the planning commission now to discuss and potentially vote, um, on this different types of usage for the, um, parcel. Further, the, um, sign in question, um, hasn't been really discussed in the sense of, uh, who would use it and things like that, so, um, it is not conforming to the ordinance, though. That's not something that we wanna, um, bring to your attention, but just let you know. Um, so, that being said, um, it's on the planning commission now, too.
So, the, the signage?
Yeah, with, with also mention of signage, since there's, there's, he's proposed two businesses going in there. Um, it, it also, um, brings to the table which business gets to sign, the sign frontage. Um, uh, signage on buildings, et cetera. Um, that kinda needs to be talked about since that is the proposal that is coming, you know, the, the, to split it. So, um, it is also in the clear vision lane, um, so that is something else that needs to be discussed.
So, as I understand it, you want us to discuss what two businesses should go into this building?
No, what usage should be allowed if granted a special use permit, and what the stipulations are for those businesses is what's being applied for.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Plus the signage.
Yeah.
So.
Well, split the signage, if you got two businesses, what are you gonna do?
Well, I think part of it is the type of sign that's currently there is something that we had discussed about not perpetuating of the big pole signs. But in this case, what happens if there's another business, where does the second sign go? But, go ahead and.
Well, that's where we get back to grandfathering.
Right.
It's been there sixty-eight years.
Ah.
Uh, it's clear vision, it's high, there's no blockage whatsoever. I mean, there's more blockage from people plowing snow and putting it on the street corners than that has.
Alright.
Split the sign, two businesses, and grandfather it in as it is.
You, you could choose to do that, is grandfathered in.
Yeah.
We have talked about removing pole signs from certain areas of the city. Um, with a special use permit, this is an opportunity to have that sign removed. Um, and then talk about on the side of building placing building signs or, or, um, other types of signs on, on the building, clearing up that clear vision lane. Um, while, uh, staff doesn't really have a recommendation on that, we just felt it, it needed to be brought up. Um, if this is something that we are looking to do, this is an opportunity to do, so.
Thing I see was if they went with a monument sign there, we'd cause more havoc for, they would have room for anything, you'd have more blocked vision. If you what now?
With a monument sign. Would, would cause more problems than.
I'm just wondering if they open up the bottom of it, it's more of a lattice work bottom, where you can see through underneath. That would take care of a lot of vision.
Well, if it's been there for sixty-eight years and we haven't had an accident, I don't see the problem that we're gonna have for the next sixty-eight.
But if we had to change something, I'd say maybe just open the bottom up to like a.
Oh, yeah, if we had to cha- yeah, if we had to change it.
A- as far as the existing signage, my suggestion is that we would grandfather, but any future signs, they would have to come in, in.
Oh, yeah.
With the planning commission.
Yeah.
That sound reasonable?
Yes, to me, it does.
Cause I also think if you were to put signage on the building.
You wouldn't see it.
On that location before you would see it.
Right.
Because the place to the north, just south further, so you wouldn't see it.
Yeah.
So, you're right there, and if you're coming from the south to the north, you almost have to be right there to see it also.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say grandfathered in with the building and.
Is that really a pole sign what's there right now?
Yeah.
Is it a little bit different than what we?
Slap sign.
It's, it's, it's shorter, for sure, yeah, but, um, I think it still meets the definition of a pole sign. Right.
And if we had to take it down, they'd end up putting on other signs.
So.
The business was. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so I make a motion that we, um, accept the, uh, application for a special use permit as written, uh, with, uh, grandfather for parking and signage. Uh, but any other changes to the, the building or signage having to go back through the planning commission.
I, and this, this is me talking, I would like to see, uh, the sign spruced up.
Yep.
I mean, it is, as it appears today, l- looking a little shabby.
Well, once Little Caesar's and they had it spruced, they had Little Caesar's there and on the building.
Right, right.
Now that they're gone, it's a blank sign.
But, but the, the base of the sign, and, you know, is, is shabby, Mr. Cruz. So, I think as, as a, as an owner, you would wanna do that?
Yeah, as the owner, I got s- about sixty thousand in there now, and I can put, I guess, some more in for you people.
Well, I mean, it's, it's your business.
Well, it's not mine, I'm helping my mother out.
Right, but it's, it's, it's a. Talking brown to make that bottom of the sign look a lot better.
Uh, it, it'll be spruced up, the poles will be painted yellow, it was just resurfaced, the black top, new windows in half, the other new windows are coming in, new heating system is in half.
Yeah.
It takes time, but it'll be done.
Yeah, maybe the poles, the poles look bent, looks like somebody ro- drove over them. But I'd like to see those straight and spruced up.
They will.
Okay.
Got yourself a gold mine there, that's what you got.
I like to be the business.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd go.
Is there gold there?
Joe probably.
Joe Donchuck, he probably put some.
Yeah, back in the cooler. Yeah, that sounds like a plan here.
I just wanna confirm something, um, so the motion was that, um, all the different types of uci- usage that was, uh, that is applied for in this special use permit to be granted based on the fact that the parking and signage is grandfathered. And if any changes to future signs or any, um, changes to the parcel would come through the planning and zoning department and effectively the, the pe- the planning commission if necessary.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Just one other question. Um, while you requested that he spruce up the sign and the poles, um, that was not part of the motion. So, there is no guarantee that that will, in fact, take place.
Well, let's make it part of the motion.
And, yeah, and I'll, I'll amend it just to make sure that, that, that the sign would just be, um, upgraded and, and cleaned up, uh, for the, whoever the, for future owners.
Alright, I'm gonna make a, um, just one, uh, comment, and then to repeat the motion would be necessary with all the amendments. So, um, I just wanna be clear that the, um, the office establishment, um, being that requirement of seventeen spaces would, would be grandfathered in for what it is now, is what we're, we're saying. Okay, um, so if you could please repeat the motion and we, uh, we can take it down, so we can.
Okay, so, motion is that we accept the special use as submitted. Grandfathering the parking and the sign with the exception that the sign would be, um, cleaned up and, and made presentable, uh, and that the, uh, any future signs or other changes to the exterior of the building would, would be submitted to the planning commission for review. I, I don't know how to, in other words, if they're gonna be putting a big banner sign or something across the side that it complies with everything else that we're talking about, so.
Okay. So, but, by leaving it generic, um, with sprucing up, um.
I don't, yeah.
You could say a planning commission review after. Right. After, within the year of the permit, it needs to be reviewed anyway, so I guess it would come to your attention, um, at least by the year if it wasn't con- spruced up, you know, so, I mean, you can make that a stipulation in the special use permit that after six months of a new business taking over, we'd like to re- like to see the, the, the things that we've stipulated of.
By, by June, when, when it's warmer weather.
And the poles out front, would you like that addressed as well in the motion? Okay. Could, could we read back the motion then? Yeah, it needs to be read, um, all. All at once. Sorry, it's, it's, sorry.
Why don't you write the motion, tell us how it is, and then we'll vote on it.
Just add it to the motion.
That way we'll have everything covered that you want.
Okay, um, so, ex- the planning commission would like to accept the special use permit as, uh, as applied for regarding all the different proposed, uh, land uses, including retail business, convenience store, professional office space, professional service establishment. Um, the planning commission would like to grandfather in the parking and the signage, and if any future changes to the, uh, parcel in that regard, including signage, would come through the planning and zoning department as well as for planning commission review. Um, a- after a six-month period of a new, of the special use permit being granted, um, having a review by the planning commission to go over different things like, um, sprucing up the sign, as well as, um, making the parking poles or, uh, in front of the building, uh, straighter and more, uh, visibly attractive.
Okay, now, that, would it be sufficient for you guys?
Mr. Cruz, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, the only thing I, uh, Mick on your, uh, your motion, uh, doing what to the building? Do I, if I put a door in that other section, do I have to come to the planning board?
If anything goes outwards or upwards, it would need to come to here if it.
Outwards or upwards?
Out, yeah.
Oh, so putting a door in, putting new windows in, okay.
You need a building permit, though.
If you wanna put a roof. And depending on what kinda sign you wanna put on the building, you may have to bring to us, if you wanna put a sign on the building.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Let's understand that.
Well, it has to be thirty-two square feet.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotta meet the requirement.
Meet, meet the signage, yeah, so.
So, with that ordinance, or does, uh, was a matter of reading that sign, Fred? That's the motion that we wanna make?
That is the motion.
That's a question, yes.
Okay.
The motion by Mike, second by Bob.
Yeah.
Um, discussion, we're good?
No. No, I'm good.
Good? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Schminski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitlow?
Yes. Thank you.
At all.
Thank you.
Bob, you'll run it.
Good luck. Should I slip it out again, Mark? Okay, let's see, that one's, uh.
What? Alright.
Third.
Zoning amendment discussion, Thoroughbred Boat Company, two sixty-six, two seventy, Third Street.
We've had a discussion, a public hearing.
We've had a discussion, a public hearing, uh, any other questions on this at all? I think we're pretty straightforward on the thing pretty well, aren't we?
I think it's pretty, uh, yeah, I think they pretty explained everything they had to.
Anybody got any ideas or anything?
You know, I, I think it's, it's a, seems like a pretty good business for that facility and.
We don't have any mail on that, do we?
There is a piece, there is a, there is one letter I'd like to read.
Okay.
Yeah, good, go ahead, I appreciate it.
Let me get to it really quick. So, this is a letter written on a letter that was mailed out, not sure if this is a pun, but, uh, it says totally on board with the permit. Uh, this area has always been commercial slash residential, it could be very good for Manistee, yours Helen Helmski.
Maniac.
Maniac.
There we are. One night, uh, one nineteen Hancock Street, City. That's all the correspondence, uh, for two sixty-six, Third Street.
Down in your station area, it didn't look good, Kyle.
Other than that, I think we're pretty good.
Yeah, I think we're very sure, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Well, unless, yeah, with whatever recommendations the staff has.
Okay, so, um, do you want me to phrase the motion for you again?
Yeah, phrase the motion.
Planning commission, um, recommends sending the zoning ordinance amendment regarding, um, assembly facilities in the R-two district to amend, um, different sections, including, uh, the land use table in Article three, um, the medium-density residential special uses in the R-two, uh, Article nine. Um, to city council for, uh, final approval, and the, and the readings, and the two readings.
I'll make that move.
Motion, but Roger? Second by Shelley? Please take roll.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, sorry, thanks, Roger.
I'm just trying to help.
Keep me straight.
Trying to help.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, please take roll.
Ready?
Yeah.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slawinski.
I want Mr. Schminski.
What? I did, Schminski, no, I said Schmansky, didn't I?
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's like that I said.
We, we were having.
It's FYI.
Pick a different name.
Okay.
Not approved, right?
It's approved.
Okay, so then that's good.
I will, um, I will, I will get this on the city council agenda, um, as soon as early next week, and it'll be, uh, readily, readily available to, um, for constituents of the town to look at, and, as well as to be read, uh, in due time, and when feasible.
Sure.
Okay. Back to me.
You did a good job.
That's your job, keep me in line.
Yeah, you could just call it gavel, but.
Yeah, he's gotta get.
Fun moving.
He had the gavel.
Oh, I thought you took it.
You can use the gavel. That's your weapon. Alright. Yeah, alright. Moving along. Uh, old business, two fifty-four River Street Marijuana Growth Facility Decision.
Excuse me. Um, last, uh, planning commission meeting, there was a, a, a public hearing and a, and a presentation on two fifty-four River Street,[1747.04] which is the old Ironworks Building, um, the applicant team is not in attendance tonight, though the planning, uh, department has a few recommendations for tabling the decision, um, requesting more information from the application team. Um, the following five bullet points, as showcased on your screen in front of you, are reasons for, uh, tabling this decision as well as having them present, um, including more information on water usage for growing of marijuana for, uh, regarding DPW's confirmation. Specific lighting information regarding height is not been provided, um, landscape rain garden on north side of parcel is a recommendation as well as a full site plan review committee, um, after a resubmital, and then the dumpster currently does not showcase a lockable gate which is necessary, um, via the marijuana ordinance. So, these are the reasons for tabling the decision, um, gives a little, another month to get this information for, um, a, a very big, uh, change to the city of Manistee, and it's something that we recommend takes a little bit more time to have all the necessary things in place so we can see, uh, see what the viable, so, um, changes are.
Did they give any reason for not showing tonight?
No reasons.
Okay. So, typically we would, we would just table it anyway because the applicant never showed, but, yeah.
So, table.
Table.
Do we have any, I mean, since you're sending them for more information, do we have any information on their outdoor activity? Being that they're right on the river, I mean, are they going to dress that up, you know, or spruce it up as the word is tonight?
There's, there's been no, uh, there's been no, um, noted changes on the site plans for, uh, anything except minimal landscaping, uh, on the front entrance, um, it's something that could be more information requestable from the planning commission, is that something that you'd like to see more information?
Well, I'd like to see if they plan on it because that, like I was talking before, there, we have that Riverwalk supposedly, I mean, you know, planning that farther down the river may take us to the lake.
Yeah, you wanna see, want the place to look good on that side.
Well, we don't want to lose it since we have an option, you know, to put a.
Put something there to make it.
Yeah.
I remember they did talk about helping out on the Riverwalk.
Yeah, well, that talk is cheap.
But, but talk is cheap.
Which is something that can be stipulated as well.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a special use permit application which dictates the planning commission to have, uh, a special opportunity, if you will.
Well, I mean.
Their property doesn't go all the way to the river, does it?
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it does, yeah.
Part of it does, yeah.
It, part of it does.
On the northern.
Yeah.
The northern side.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah. They have a, they have a dock actually, or it did, I don't know if the docks exist anymore, but.
Yeah, they.
That platform?
No docks.
Platform micros?
So, here's the parcel, just for reference, on your, on your screen, I can point to the parcels so we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, already.
Yeah, 'cause I thought Consumers was behind that.
Well, they have some of it, Consumers does, but right there.
Yeah.
Right there, okay.
It's actually a significant amount of waterfrontage and, and an int- integral part for the Riverwalk in the future, um, to link the peninsula.
Stuff is on the other side of the bridge anyway.
Consumers has homes on both other sides.
Correct.
Uh-huh.
So, I'll add that to, um, the recommendations, Roger.
If you think it'd be a reasonable request, I mean.
Which is landscaping in my, uh, about, yeah.
Yeah, it's a landscaping program or picture.
Great.
So, hopefully there, uh, they have everything in place by next month, next month's meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we don't really care about how quick they do it, I mean, they're the ones that are.
Right, right, but, well.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, I'd put it out for next month, I'd put it out for the next meeting.
That's if they get the stuff to us.
If they, yeah.
Right.
Stuff to us.
If they don't get it to us, we just put it off again. That's why I said hopefully. Yeah, and spruce up.
Open-ended, like, yeah. Spruce it up.
Spruce it up. Could we?
Let's get out of here, we got only ban a live Thursday night football.
Why, watching Dancing with the Stars?
Oh, Can You Dance? I watch Can You Dance.
Are we?
What's that?
Where are we?
We're right here in public comment and communication.
Yeah, public comment.
Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to say? I didn't say nothing. Name and address, please.
I, I wanna thank the.
Name and address. Name and address, please.
For working through the iss-
Who are you?
Who are you?
You know who I am.
No, name and address.
You know the law rules.
Linda Beaton, two fifty-six Hughes Street.
You have five minutes.
Okay, um, I wanna thank the planning department for working through the issues for the, uh, old piece of place on Cypress Street. Um, it, it's meeting our goals, which is, you know, providing more jobs, so I, I appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate the boat industry coming in, I think that'll be a nice thing to have in Manistee since we have so much water. That, hopefully you'll plan some activities, events on the water so people can see the boats in action. Um, and then, just as, about the marijuana, uh, with the old Ironworks Building, um, I just want you to be aware that they have approached the city, um, and asked for all twelve of the growing licenses, which we are going to be taking a look at on city council as increasing the number of grow licenses because we have other people who have indicated that they want to grow in the city, and we've already approved those sites for that. So, I don't know whether that has anything to do with them not being here tonight, but it did come up at our last meeting, and next Tuesday is a work session, so we can't act on anything anyway, it's just a work session, so I thought I'd remind you guys of that. But again, thank you for, for all that you've done, it's, it's moving us forward and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Linda, before you walk away, now, if that was the question where the Ironworks asked for all twelve, what happens to the thirty-one district that we set up for this?
This is for growing.
Oh, for growing.
That's gonna provide a lot more jobs.
Well, yeah.
A part of it.
Well, they grow, yeah, okay, okay.
But they've asked for all twelve of the licenses, and I think we have an opportunity to take a look at that, and we've asked city staff to go back and recommend an appropriate number of licenses, uh, for growing, because.
Growing.
The job creator, and we have other people who have already invested in property in the city that intend to do growing as well.
Well, that's what I mean for, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger, uh, this is, uh, um, just, just for, you know, us and, you know, now, has any of the other applicants that had, uh, expressed a desire to grow within the city, have they applied, or?
I think so.
Okay, so they came forward and applied for all twelve licenses?
Well, no, I, the, the people who own the Ironworks Building now.
Right, they need the special use.
Growing in that building, they've already told city management that they would like to apply for the twelve. They haven't actually applied.
Okay, that was my.
Obviously, because they have to go through.
One, one has applied, we've, we've already had one, right, that has applied to the city count, through the, all the process.
Is that the?
On Tenth Street?
Tenth Street, yeah.
Yeah, so there's one license that's already been, I thought.
But I don't know that it's, as far as I know, all twelve are still up, so.
So, how many at, or maybe you don't know at this point, how many are, is the city considering having grow?
We have twelve, it's in our ordinance now for twelve.
Correct, but you're saying they might take a look at.
Increasing, yes.
But we don't know to what.
We don't know, 'cause we're wait, waiting for city staff to come back with us with that, I propose number.
Okay.
And I'm sure they're gonna talk to you also, um.
Yeah, that's the confusing part, then, can you as council, uh, just change the numbers, how many you accept or reject or? I mean, for the amount of individual teams that came in, they paid some money, you know, to apply, and now if they're. Yeah, it's, I don't really understand it.
Well, I think it's really enough with the growing licenses and the processing licensing and.
Yeah, there's so many different licenses.
That we still have plenty of time to adjust the number.
Okay, okay.
So.
So, once we open the can of worms, we can, we can go unlimited, really.
Well, that would've been nice to do with the overlay district, I, uh, because that's what we had, you know.
That's what it was for.
Free to unlimited, back to, we don't know about that, so, and now we settle at five, but I think once we settled at five, that was at the last, I think that was the most appropriate and the last time that we could've changed without affecting or somebody upsetting too many people at that point, so. We don't want to make the same mistake, I think we want to be on.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so you say it went from five to unlimited, back to five now?
It went to, it went originally from three.
Three.
Each.
Three, to unlimited, and we got to the second reading of the ordinance for unlimited.
Right.
And suddenly there were a few council members that did not want it to be unlimited, we want, they wanted to come up with a fixed number.
Right.
So, we kicked around anywhere from five to seven in discussion, and then we ended up at five.
Oh, is that, has that affected the overlay district?
I don't think so.
No, no, it won't affect it.
No, no, I mean, as far as development, is, is it still moving forward, the developers?
The five, the five that got them, yes.
Okay.
Am I saying that correctly?
Plus, there's another.
There, he's, are, you're speaking on retail licenses.
It's up retail with the growing, with the.
Yeah, right, that's the problem.
With the growing, yeah.
Right.
And, and the medical marijuana.
Medical's a different category itself, too.
It's still unlimited for medical marijuana.
Dispensaries.
Mm-hmm.
So, recreation.
For selling of medical marijuana.
Recreation was five and the medical is still unlimited.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to try to clarify.
Yeah.
We had eleven applicants come through, are all of them licensed now by the city?
No, you've approved their site plans.
Right.
But we only allow for five adult recreational marijuana licenses in that district by.
And three medical, so eight total. And, and some of them, uh, that came to us were requesting, um, for a mixed, the, the, uh, uh, microbusiness.
Yes.
They did not submit for a microbusiness, none of them submitted the microbusinesses forward. So, we agreed, we, we approved three microbusinesses here in, in our.
Yeah, so why didn't they?
None of them went forward.
One of, one of the applicants came forward at their last meeting, and, and I don't think you were, you weren't here at the last.
That's, that's incorrect, Mick, um, I, I just, I, I want to clarify something so there's no confusion. Uh, when the special use permits came forward, uh, licensing and the special use on those, on those properties is not linked, um, not, so like, you guys approved special use for marijuana within those par- parcels, um, the licensing of those goes on to the city, the planning commission does not touch those, um, so when you say we approve microbusinesses, that is, that is not an incorrect, that's incorrect, 'cause we approve a special use of marijuana on those, those parcels, not necessarily what in licensing they go for. Um, so that, that is, you know, they came forward and said, I am going for this.
That we received in my packet.
Right.
Says that they were going to have a microbusiness operation.
That, that is correct, yeah, some of them came forward and.
There were three of those that had that specific, that's what I'm saying that we agreed to, that's what I, what I said yes to from, from, from the planning commission, that's what I was saying, is that's what I agreed to because that was what they submitted to us in writing, after it went to you, then obviously it goes through a different process.
And if these co- companies don't get approval from the state for a license, the moot point anyway, I know.
Well, I just.
There's other processes.
But I was trying to clarify where we were with the city approving, because they have to get a city license before they can go back.
No, you gotta get a state license first.
The state, the staff does that, the city council does not take all the applicants that were approved for their site plans in that district and decide which ones.
Right.
The city staff had a method, they had a checklist, people lined up to get them.
Yeah.
Right.
And then they, the first five that came through the door actually apparently had all of their paperwork and everything in order.
And then they had to go back to the state.
Yes, because there still has to be.
But they don't have a license from the city yet till they get the license from the state. The state's got a.
They have approval.
They have approval to apply to the state.
So, that's where they are.
All right. It's a, it's a sticky situation.
It's a convoluted mess.
Five retail.
Medical, right.
Medical.
Yeah.
And no micro?
No, apparently there's not a lot of interest in doing the micro.
Oh, okay, thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I'm sorry.
You exceeded your five minutes, so. All right. Correspondents, is there any correspondence received?
Uh, none.
None?
Besides what was read.
Okay. Staff reports?
We have three topics, uh, the first, I'll start with the harbor plan, uh, in front of you, on your screen is twenty-five pages of inventory of the city of Manistee's entities along a water body, including Lake Michigan, Manistee River, um, Channel, uh, Manistee Lakes, site development, marketing, annual maintenance, and things like that. Um, the different facilities are outlined in this document, which will, uh, effectively go to the harbor commission, uh, as soon as next Tuesday, um, which will then need, um, which is, needs a thirty-day, um, citizen, uh, period for comment, which we're in right now, um, starting, I think, either tomorrow or the next day, and then, uh, in early January, it's, um, ready for adoption. So, um, the different maps and things created here was done through the planning department, that showcase, um, like I said, the different facilities and things like that, um, it was made available in your packet, not sure if we had time to look it over, but this is for, um, applying for different grants, including, it's a DNR requirement for waterways grants, um, which, um, is a great way for the city to obtain funding for different things, um, to fix different areas, uh, including beachfront and things like that. Does anyone have any questions about this document, or?
All right, if I.
No. Go ahead.
Well, we had some homeowners, if you recall, off of Fifth Street, or First Street, come to us here about three, four months ago with, and they wanted to extend their property line towards the river, if you recall.
Or lot sizes?
And, or.
We're talking about waterfront yards and things like.
Yeah, and now you stated we would wait till this harbor commissioner, harbor, had their meeting and laid out some lot rules, so now, do, do we expect those homeowners to come back, or?
I'm sorry, Roger, to clarify, it was, uh, the zoning board of appeals, um, that was going to review the waterfront yard setbacks, and they already, um, have, uh, indicating that waterfront yard parcels, um, does not matter the distance, uh, from, from the water, it matters that if your parcel is effectively actually touching a water body, if that makes sense. It was a really convoluted topic, as we, if we remember, and.
Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals, uh, favored that regardless of if you're inside the setback for waterfront, and, uh, it doesn't matter unless you're actually touching the water.
Okay.
So, the parcels in question were within a hundred feet of a water body, and we can see the erosion happening at a quick rate with the different, um, Riverwalk being, uh, blown out as of two days ago, literally, and the, uh, middle picture there is, um, what we saw in the newspaper, um, regardless, uh, that's not the same as the harbor plan, though.
Okay.
It was a zoning board of appeals decision that happened in May or something around then in the summertime.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
So, um, this, like I said, this document goes over different things, um, inventorying things for future, uh, redevelopment, like Ninth Street Boat Launch, um, that is a serious, uh, site development issue, and these are the different figures that were brought to, um, the planning department via, uh, city engineer.
Oh, sure, sure.
So, it's around two point eight million dollars worth of things that have been, um, uh, noteworthy of replacement or, um, fixing, and through the DNR waterways grant, these can become a reality through a document like the harbor plan, um, which is before you.
Yeah, so basically this thing is a part of, uh, submittal for, uh, grants that you have to have, and you gotta get all those ducks in a row, so.
Yep.
They say, okay, you've got this plan, okay, you meet this criteria, this criteria, okay, you qualify for a grant.
Yeah, it's just basically inventorying and documenting, um, that we have a plan for, moving forward for what we want to apply for, uh, if, if feasible. So, Veterans Park obviously is a big, uh, water body, or waterfront parcel, um, as well as, um, the Ninth Street Boat Launch, R Three Street Boat Launch and things, the different events and marketing happen, um, uh, throughout the different months to, uh, get people along the water bodies, um, the maintenance schedules are shown in the, in the plan as well as different replacement schedules and timelines, uh, and projected costs, um, so, there's many different supporting documentation and agencies that help, um, this into potential, so, uh, different contact information for people, too. So, this is a draft, like I said, I'm, uh, waiting to, uh, we're waiting to prioritize the different projects, a little bit different on the page thirteen, um, so it's not years, but more priorities, because we're not, we're uncertain that all of these will be, you know, uh, s- specific projects for, say, year twenty-two, it'll just be priority zones, so it'll be, you know, so, do you have a question?
You gotta put it something in order, something, some presentation of some type for them to look at, anyway.
Yeah, you gotta have a plan, they won't get enough without a plan.
Shelley, you have a question?
Just a comment that, I don't know if anybody, um, else was down on First Street today, um, looking out into the channel, but it seems as though a dock was in the middle of the channel, just kind of floating along, and as we look, I think it's wonderful that we're looking at this and trying to get grant money, but we don't seem to be able to control what's going on with the water that's tearing all this stuff up. The other, uh, thing I did want to mention, there was quite a nice thing in here on Veterans Memorial Park, but nobody in the city seems to give a crap about the road to get to that park.
Which is a piece of crap.
Yeah.
And we should be embarrassed that our Veterans Memorial has a road like that to drive on to go honor veterans. And we should be embarrassed that our Veterans Memorial has a road like that to drive on, to go honor veterans, I mean, give me a break.
Yeah.
So it seems like we're kinda getting the cart before the horse again, where we're trying to invest money. To en- enhance and improve things, but the infrastructure isn't there, and then it all goes literally down the river.
If I remember right, I think the repairing memorial drive there is in the city plans for upgrading roads in the future here, it's just in the, it takes, it's in, I don't know what year it was in, but it's in there.
It's been crap for the last ten years.
I understand, there are a lot of streets in town like that, too.
I do think that the city.
That is a major, um, thoroughfare, if you will, for people coming off of thirty-one. Coming, you know, short cutting to downtown, going to First Street Beach.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that is a major road that should be taken care of better than it is.
And I think they do have a serious plan to fix it, because the Thirty-One Bridge is gonna be closed, I think, next year. And they're gonna be, they're gonna be.
It's gotta be an upgrade.
Reaching traffic for a considerable amount of time on Washington, over, um, off of.
Harrison.
Not, where, they're gonna, they're gonna try, I think they're gonna start diverting it all the way up as far as, uh, veterans going over to, uh, uh, Washington Street. And then the other variant is gonna be at, uh, at the Veterans Drive.
See, the bridge is overdue for repairs by MDOT, so, it's there, it's falling into the MDOT's rotation of repairs.
Is Memorial, well, I'm gonna ask council, councilman, um, is it in the, in the five-year plan?
Oh, yes, yeah, it is, there, the difference is, we're trying to get the state to fund it rather than us, because the state needs that road in order for them to do their, their highway work. So we would prefer to not use our street money if we can get the state to use theirs.
So, and that's due next year in twenty?
I think so, it's on twenty-one, twenty or twenty-one, it's, I think it's next year, I don't know what budgeting.
Okay, all right, okay.
Because it's gonna be a detour, you're almost forced to redo it, so.
Good.
Go ahead.
All right.
Next, the, um, the planning department and the DDA are having a meeting next week to discuss different housing issues, uh, including lower-story dwelling units and other. Um, potential subjects for ordinance amendments, uh, moving forward, on that meeting, um, can be discussed at the January meeting of the planning commission to. Kind of outline what was talked about, as well as, um, different highlights and, uh, transgressions, um, so that's happening next week, I just wanna make it aware to you that. Um, we are moving forward with, uh, connectivity with different, uh, city, uh, agencies and things, as well as county agencies, to make these different changes that are being brought to the attention, uh, feasible reality.
Isn't that going to require a zoning amendment, because we talked about that last month.
And that's why, that's why the, the planning and zoning is taught, meeting with the DEA, to go, DDA to go over that stuff, to figure out what needs to be done, so they can bring it to us.
Oh, okay, because I thought we had talked about it, and.
Yeah, we talked about it, and to set up a meeting with the DDA, so we can all be on the same page.
Okay.
And then after this meeting, we'll be able to have a clear, more concise, kind of, uh, bulleted list, if you will, to kind of tackle, uh, the different feasible projects.
Unfortunately, after the meeting, um, had lined up, that we had discussed this, um, the DDA had met, um, the, I think that morning, that we. Um, after we had discussed it, they didn't have another meeting available until, um, for us to present ideas and discuss with them, until, um, I believe it is, uh, next Wednesday, so.
Cause didn't they have a, that group that was in here with the city, didn't they do a big study on housing and have a big meeting?
Yeah, Beckton and Raider came through as a third party, is that what you're talking about?
Real Tide or something.
Pride of the Tide, they had, uh, there's a housing piece of that, yes, that came.
Yeah, they had, uh, information or recommendations also.
Yeah.
But not necessarily dealing with the specifics of the.
This area.
The, the DDA with, with.
Within the DDA district.
Some of the options that they're looking at for housing, right?
All right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, the last, uh, bullet point in staff reports is the citizen planner, which was brought, uh, by Roger last time and a couple meetings before, we have registered, um, up to six members, uh. We've registered for the citizen planner, um, certification, uh, recordings and webinar, uh, we'd like to have the, uh, city planning commission, as well as the county planning commission. Um, formally invited to the planning department to go over these webinars, um, on a one or two-hour, uh, basis, um, with each commission, uh, respectively bringing popcorn each time. Um, so that being said, uh, anyway, um, that's a, a further development, though, um, we have, uh, like I just said, um. Uh, secured the webinars, we're waiting to get, um, the actual, um, hard copy and documents, and when those are made available, we'll be able to reach out, Nancy, do you have anything else?
I don't know if it's coming on hard copy, if we're gonna be able to go into it through the internet and do it that way, that's. And we have the screen in that at our department and the ability to go into that website and pull it up, that's what we, Rob and I just started that this morning, and we.
The logistics are still coming down the line, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For master planner, we were even seeing, we were actually doing some of them during our, our meetings.
Yeah.
Right, but there are six parts to it, and I guess Rob's thought was as if, with the price of it, if we. Get the planning commission of the county and the planning commission of the city together, they could do it at the same time.
Right.
And share the expense and do it both, rather than sit through it twice, you know, like us, you know.
That's how we've been doing it there.
So.
Yeah, same.
But with the county and the city together, okay.
Okay.
Well, we, we've been invited, Tyler, we'd bring them all up here and put it on, I think, uh, what's him call it, uh? Oh, who's he, uh, oh, he used to work here.
We did the citizen planner.
Same fellow.
There are six.
Schindler, Kurt Schindler.
Oh, okay, there are six parts to it, though, so, yeah.
But they're one-hour sessions.
I don't know, we haven't got that.
They always, yeah, there used to be one-hour sessions, I don't know what they're.
Okay, yeah, I don't know either.
You'll be able to fill us in later.
Yep, all these different webinars pertain to the city, including redevelopment-ready communities, marijuana, um, the different, uh, banning of different regulations and such, uh, public engagement, as well as short-term rentals. I think those all definitely apply to the city, and would be very helpful for the planning commission, so we, we've registered everyone for that, and we'll have more information, uh, soon.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, personally speaking, I'd hate to lose it, just because of lack of time, I mean, if I gotta watch six hours this month, I will, you know, to keep the progress.
So.
Otherwise, we're gonna get screwed.
Speaking of, uh, of short-term rentals, is the planning, uh, are you guys working on any, uh, changes to, uh. Approach us with as far as the short-term rental issues?
Uh, currently, um, O'Nekama Township has passed a short-term rental, um, police power ordinance.
Right.
Um, we have not looked into, um, that for the city yet, um, if that is something that the planning commission wishes, then, um, we can start looking into that, but. Um, as of right now, that is, that has not been made a priority.
But what we normally do, not, or are you finished, Mike?
Well, no, I was just gonna say that I, I've seen the article.
Yeah.
O'Nekama, but we've also seen it in Traverse City and other cities are, are.
If you.
Starting to get aware that it's becoming an issue.
Yeah.
And, and I don't want us to be at, at the end, uh, before we kind of address it, you know.
Yeah, let him, better go on.
Well, what we, what we used to do, or in days past, is like the end of the year, check the, the CBA. Zoning Board of Appeals, and see what is the priority of the problems that have been coming to the zoning board of appeals, and then try to make a correction. On our end, so it doesn't happen as much, but I don't know if we're having.
I don't think this is, this is not really dealing with, this, the short-term rental is, is, has kind of broader aspects.
So, i- i- if you want me to get into a, a bit, is, is basically, short-term rentals are a commercial, um, entity that. You know, is existing under like, a rental, you know, and you guys do have a rental, um, program within the city, um, but short-term rentals are kinda, you know, something new, it's, um.
Like that air, air, air.
Airbnb, or, but like, a lot of that is, um, it, it, and it's also listed as an issue with, um, you know, not having, uh, certain kind of, um. Power to control that with, uh, if you, you know, you've heard from Rising Tide, and they addressed it as well. Um, where you don't have livable areas if you're a resort community or a destination, because, um, when you can rent out a house for two hundred and fifty dollars a night during the season. Um, you know, from May till October, if you're able to, uh, run out your, 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 your house at that point, you've basically paid your mortgage and then some for the year. So then it becomes a profit-driving thing, and is it a commercial entity, which then isn't allowed in residential districts, so then it goes that route, so, um. There, it is a, a very big can of worms, um, i- and I think if we, if you would like us to bring something forward for an educational purpose of. Maybe a, you know, a presentation of something, and kinda let you know the issues, or, or just what, what is going on, I think that would be appropriate, and then, um. You know, we could, we could then discuss how you guys would like to approach it, um, I can also bring in O'Nekama's, um. Their short-term rental that they just approved, um, they've actually put a, um, uh, moratorium on it until October first of next year, I believe it is. Um, just to allow them to get some of the kinks out with all the seasonal residents that they have, because they felt that they weren't, they were being unjustly targeted, um, and, uh. So there is some issues along those lines, they did have four public meetings where they got a lot of response in there, so, um, I can bring that for next time, if you would like.
Mm-hmm, wouldn't hurt. Or like you say, they may have a webinar on it, though, you know, short-term rental, or something.
That is, that's what brought it up.
It wouldn't hurt to see what some of the other communities have on these short-term rentals, too.
Yeah, no, or like I was saying, Nancy, too, it would be like O'Nekama, we, we would invite O'Nekama Planning and, you know, to a group, and then have them show a presentation.
To this?
Excuse me?
To this?
No, 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 for that webinar, for that, uh, MSU.
Many of the O'Nekama Planning Commission isn't seasonal residence, so, um, they, they leave on December, so.
Yeah, well, you, you gotta watch what you do.
Yeah, they won't be back, maybe April.
That's right.
But, um, uh.
I'll go get them.
Yeah, that's right, they don't, yeah.
Um, one, one thing is to consider, some communities are, um, in O'Nekama, they, they're issuing out licenses, basically, um, and if you've found a violation, they revoke that license. Um, if you're, you know, becoming a nuisance, some communities are outright, um, saying no to Airbnbs, um, and then ticketing appropriately through their, their, um, their ordinances. Saying, hey, this is a commercial entity, and, uh, we're not gonna allow it to exist, you know, outside of, um, hotels, motels, and appropriate zoned areas. So others are doing, um, special use permitting to a- address it, so.
Yeah, how are they nailing these people that are just doing their own home?
Quick internet search is pretty, uh, easy to do.
So people are just going out and seeing who's out there and doing that.
So, I mean, if you go to Airbnb and look at Manistee, you'll see.
And they're tattling on all their.
Well, it's not tattling, I mean, I can go on right now.
People, somebody from here, say you got a house you got, you go to, you, you contact Airbnb and tell them you wanna do it, and Airbnb will say, okay, we got this house available by this person.
I get that, but I'm saying, who's taking that to someone that's enforcing that?
So it's your enforcement officer, usually that is in charge of that, so you, you designate somebody as that, or, um, you, if it's a police power, then obviously, you know, you'd have to have. An enforcement officer designated that, and then ticketing would come through the police department, I believe, is that what?
That's what the Nekama did, didn't it, it was in the police.
They made it a police power, so that way, um, they could avoid, uh, so, if I had to enforce it, I'd write a ticket, then they could go to the zoning board of appeals, and then, uh, get. Tied up in district court, where now they can say, hey, you have a license, you're in violation, here's a ticket, um, kinda cutting out some of the steps in, involved in that. Um, and they're not, they're not seeking people, but as, um, you know, they're not going out and actively searching like you could, uh, but what they're doing is, is, as complaints come in.
Right.
Um, then they're gonna address it.
There's twenty teenagers, uh, partying in the front yard of the neighbor's house.
And there's so, there's so many people just doing.
Maxwell Town, it could be okay, I think.
Yeah, well, there you go, see, or we can give them a, we'll make a special use.
Only on Casioasko. Okay, let's move along, let's, no, well, we're not done yet, Rog.
All right.
Member discussion, you got anything, Rog?
No, no, the webinar, I was concerned about that, how many, how many of us are there on that? Yeah, you make it, aren't you, Michael?
All of us.
All of us, all of us are on that?
There's only one new person that would have to take the.
Yeah, but I mean, I ain't to lose it all just because of that, yeah, okay, that's it, yeah.
Okay, Bob, what, you have anything?
Uh, it's almost Friday.
Very good, Mick?
Yeah, just, uh, don't forget the parade on Saturday morning, or Saturday afternoon at five-thirty.
Yeah.
Five-thirty in the morning, oh, right, I got that five-thirty in the morning.
And, uh, don't forget your, uh, chili cook-off, uh, Friday night.
Yeah.
I think that was, that was a soup cook-off.
And the Jingle Jam Saturday night at the American Legion, and, and put your brochure for all the other events.
I thought it was a soup cook-off, not, uh, chili. Everything I saw was soups.
Soup and chili are the same thing.
Soup and chili.
Made on the oven, made on the oven, okay. Yeah, Shelley? I just have like, six things.
Only?
Let's table.
This is a, uh, an oldie but goodie, um, storage facility at two ninety-four, twelfth? On eleven-thirty, I was out past midnight, yes, um, the gate was open. And it was supposed to shut down at ten, I believe. Um, also, on Twelfth Street, we discussed a little bit about, uh, Swodorski and their mining operation, when, has there been anything on that?
Uh, regarding anyone coming about stopping, ceasing the operation, or?
Yes.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I know Rob mentioned it, so, if we can run that down.
Yeah.
I hate to see that brand-new street.
Did you call the member to let them know that they?
No, I did not.
Oh, you were just checking on it.
I was riding by, cause I went to Meyer, and I told my daughter to drive by, so I was checking, being a Nazi, so. Uh, February meeting, um, I have asked the new DDA director to be a special guest for a special presentation, so. Um, and on twelve eighteen, it's, uh, at the Ramsdale, at ten-thirty AM, there's a celebrate Manistee, I believe that's with Rising Tide, is that it, so? What?
Twelve eighteen?
Yes.
Twelve eighteen at ten-thirty AM at the Ramsdale, I'll be working.
Oh, is that the Sparks?
Yeah, Project Rising Tide, uh, celebration.
Okay.
The, uh, everybody can attend?
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay?
Nope.
All right? Okay, Bob.
Someone's gotta work today.
Um, and, uh, that is it, for me, so, I'll. Thank, uh, the applicants and congratulate them, and, uh, for everybody that showed up, Linda, so. With that, I take a motion.
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 Second?